Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's hearing. It's September 30th, 2024. My name is Daniel Kearns. I'm an Oregon land use lawyer and a hearings officer, and will be presiding over this application on remand from the Court of Appeals and Luba. This is Haugen versus City of Scappus, Luba number 2023-001. A city council elected to remove itself from the process and have an independent land use hearings officer here and decide the matter on remand from Luba and the Court of Appeals. As most of you know, hearings officers are a common decision-making pathway, especially in jurisdictions that see a lot of appeals and particularly technical or legalistic land use proposals. My job is to take testimony, review the record, weigh the credibility of evidence, crystallize the legal issues, and render a decision. Before we get going, though, I want to explain, first of all, how the process is going to work tonight and make a few statements that are required by state law to describe public participation rights and actually the schedule of events on how this will work. First of all, I've been appointed by the city council to hear and decide this application on remand by reviewing the record from below, the applicant's materials on remand, along with all comments following remand, and then hold a public hearing such as this to accept evidence and testimony as specifically directed by Luba and the Court of Appeals in their remand orders. The entire record from the prior proceeding is part of the record before me. Ultimately, my job in this matter is to decide whether the application meets or does not meet the applicable approval criteria. Those are the standards that were in the city's Development Code and other standards at the time the application was submitted. And those are the criteria that establish the outer limits of my authority in this case. I cannot be more stringent nor more lenient than those criteria allow. Rather, I am required to interpret them and determine whether they're met or not met or whether compliance can be assured through the conditions of approval. If the application demonstrates compliance with those standards, state law requires that I approve the application. The applicable approval criteria were listed and analyzed in the staff report that was issued prior to tonight's hearing, which also includes staff's recommended findings on each of those standards, along with conditions of approval. Copy of the staff report can be obtained from the city's website, and staff will provide a brief verbal report summary of it tonight. The issues before me in this remand, though, are limited to those that were identified by the Court of Appeals and Luba in their respective remand orders related to assignments of error 2, 3, 4, and 7, and nothing else. If any of you believe that other or different criteria apply, you must identify those standards and explain to me why you believe they apply. In deciding this proposal, I'm required to render an impartial and unbiased decision. I believe that I am impartial and capable of rendering an unbiased decision based on the evidence in the record, the applicable approval criteria and Luba's and Court of Appeals remand orders. I have no business, personal, familial, or other relationship with any of the parties to this proceeding. What I know about the application is what I have gleaned from the record. And if anyone wishes to question me about my potential biases, conflicts of interest, or ex parte contacts, you may ask those questions during the public testimony portion of tonight's hearing. Now, some procedural statements that are required by state law. First of all, this is not the initial evidentiary hearing on this matter, but I will take testimony from anyone who wants to participate tonight. The issues I will allow testimony on, however, are limited to those identified by the Court of Appeals and Luba in their respective remand orders related to assignments of error 2, 3, 4, and 7. Nothing else. The applicant will be allowed 15 minutes for its presentation, as will the primary opponent, Mr. Haugen, 15 minutes. And then I'll allow anyone else who wants to testify three minutes each. As I read Luba's final remand order in the matter, new evidence is appropriate in response to the second assignment of error and legal argument based on the existing record is appropriate in response to assignments of error 2, 3, 4, and 7. State law provides the following definitions of these operative terms. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or noncompliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. So I'm kind of bound by those statutory definitions of those operative terms. When you testify tonight, please begin with your name and the city where you reside and limit your testimony to just the issues on remand as I have described them. These relate to a relatively small subset of the total universe of approval standards in the Development Code and Comprehensive Plan and other development standards adopted by the city that applied to the original application on the date it was submitted. My decision is limited to these criteria, which will be summarized by staff before the public testimony begins. So you should tailor your testimony to those criteria. If you believe that other or different criteria apply, you must identify to me what those standards are and explain why you think they apply. If you need additional time to prepare your comments, you can ask that the record be left open or after tonight's hearing if you want that. You must make that request during the public testimony portion of the hearing while the record is still open and give me some justification as to why you want or need more time. Understand that there are just limited bases under Oregon law for keeping the record open after the hearing, and I will only keep the record open if there's a legally compelling reason to do so. My decision on this project will be the city's final decision, but that will not become final until the city council implements it through the adoption of a suitable ordinance. Once that happens, the decision may be appealed to Luba by anyone withstanding. The city council will not rehear the remand on this project, but will simply accept, modify, or reject my decision. So in a sense, my decision, which will be issued in writing approximately two weeks after the record closes, that will go to the city council as a recommendation. So the city council will be the final decider in this case, and that will come through at least the adoption of an ordinance by council. To appeal any aspect of my decision, you must participate either orally or in writing. Before the record closes, you must raise before me any issue you want to preserve for a subsequent appeal to Luba. You must also present to me any evidence you want me to consider or which you want to rely upon in a subsequent appeal. Failure to raise an issue while the record is open with sufficient specificity to allow me or others to respond to that issue will preclude a subsequent appeal based on that issue to Luba. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow me to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages later on in Circuit Court. So let me also describe kind of the sequence of events. First of all, we'll have a staff report, which will be a verbal rendition of the written staff report that was issued prior to tonight's hearing. After that, the applicant gets to make their primary presentation, get 15 minutes to do that. After that, I'll take testimony from anyone in favor of the proposal, and I'll limit those speakers to three minutes. After that, I'll accept neutral testimony or questions, again, limited to three minutes each. After that, I'll take testimony from anyone opposed to the proposal, beginning with the primary opponent, Mr. Haugen, who will get 15 minutes for his presentation. All other individuals opposed to the project will be limited to three minutes per person. After all the public testimony, the applicant gets a final rebuttal, for which I'll allow 10 minutes. The applicant may also submit final written rebuttal after tonight's hearing, as state law allows. Under Oregon law, the applicant gets the last word in all of these proceedings because the applicant has the burden of proof, the burden of proving that they have met all the applicable approval criteria. At the end of tonight's hearing, before I close the public testimony, I will check to see if staff has any parting advice based on the testimony that's come in. And I typically issue my decisions in writing approximately two weeks after the record closes, so you should not expect a verbal ruling from me at the conclusion of tonight's hearing. And if you want a copy of the decision when it comes out, make sure you sign up at the back, somehow get your contact information to the planning director so you can receive that decision. So that's it by way of procedural rundown tonight. Does anyone have any questions about the process? Okay. We have people on Zoom out there in the internet universe, and we'll take a little primer on how to function in that internet environment.
Yeah. See, there are a couple folks online. So if either of you are interested in providing public testimony tonight, use the raise hand feature in Microsoft Teams. And then for folks in the room, be sure if you want to provide testimony tonight to fill out one of these forms and then pass it over to me. I'll be here for the night. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. If anyone has procedural questions as we go along, pipe up, and we'll deal with those so that everyone understands how to participate. With that, we'll take a staff report, please.
Good evening. Hearings Officer Dan Kearns and interested parties. So I'm going to summarize the staff report for you all tonight. I'll state the issues on remand, the approval criteria that apply to those issues on remand, summarize the public comments received, staff's response to those comments, and provide staff's recommendation on the application. The applicant requests that the hearings officer affirms the city council's decision for approval of a 44-lot subdivision, planned development overlay, conditional use permit, and sensitive lands development permits for floodplain wetlands, slow hazard, and fish and riparian corridor, specifically in relation to those items remanded by Luba case number 2023-001. As a side note, David Weekly Holmes initially requested approval of a 48-lot subdivision. However, the city council authorized no more than 44 lots with a minimum square footage of 4,000 square feet as a condition of approval in its final decision in 2022. Site is located south of southwest JP West Road and Captain Roger Cussera Way, described as Columbia County tax assessor lot number 3212CB00401. City provided notice of the upcoming hearing to city departments and public agencies, including the City of Scappus Engineering, Public Works, Police Department, Building Department, and City Managers, Scappus School District Superintendent, Scappus Rural Fire District, Columbia County Public Works, Columbia River Peoples Utility District, Scappus Bay Watershed Council, and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Agency and department comments that were received by the city are included as exhibits B 1 through 4 in the remand staff report. No concerns were raised in these comments. On September 20th, 2024, notice of the remand public hearing was mailed to property owners located within 300 feet of the subject site and to those who provided comments during the previous land use hearing. Notice was also posted on the property September 17th, 2024, and published in the local newspaper September 20th, 2024. As of 1:00 PM on the date of this report, of the remand staff report, no comments had been received by the public. However, two public comments were received September 26, which were placed online on September 27 with all other items from the record for this proceeding on the city's website. Copies of those comments are also on the back table. These public comments have been entered into the record and placed before the hearings officer, who was emailed the comments on September 27. I will summarize these comments and staff's responses to those comments towards the end of my staff report presentation. Again, the staff report is narrowly focused on addressing just the four issues remanded by Luba in case number 2023-001 to the city to address. The issues on remand are the following. The second assignment of error. Luba determined that the city must allow interested parties to respond to the applicant's statement that 44 was the number of lots the applicant could make pencil while protecting the creek, providing a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. Third assignment of error. The city must adopt written findings concerning whether a reduction in lots from 48 to 44 and requiring a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet would make the project noncompliant with the applicable criteria for approval. The fourth assignment of error. The city must adopt written findings that address whether the construction of stormwater ponds are permitted use within the floodplain. And the seventh assignment of error. The city must adopt written findings to adequately explain the evidence in the record, how the evidence in the record leads to the conclusion that the city planner and city engineer approved an exemption from the city's block length standards in Scappus Development Code Section 17.154.040 and to explain why the street is not a cul-de-sac or, if it is a cul-de-sac, adequately address the cul-de-sac standards. The third, fourth, and seventh assignments of error do not require the city to open the record for new evidence, only to adopt adequate findings demonstrating compliance with the applicable approval criteria related to those issues, which will demonstrate as already contained within the previous record. For that reason, the city will only consider new evidence related to the second assignment of error. Verbal or written arguments may be made regarding any of the assignments of error using information already in the record. Findings and conditions of approval for the current remand process are contained within the remand staff report. The approval criteria related to this remand are comp plan goals and policies related to general goals for land uses and suburban residential land use designation, Chapter 17.22, amendments to the title Comp Plan and Maps, Chapter 17.81, planned development overlay, Chapter 17.130, conditional use, and Chapter 17.154, street and utility improvement standards. I'll now provide a summary of the submitted written comments. So both written comments were received from Mr. Haugen. The first comment, item number one, from the second comment relate to whether or not the city council has the ability to delegate their quasi-judicial decision-making authority to a hearings officer. Staff asserts that this is allowed, which was determined in conjunction with the city attorney. Reasons for this are as follows. There are no provisions within the Scappus Municipal Code or city charter that govern the process for how a remand is handled, including a remand hearing. Scappus Municipal Code 2.04.170A states, "Any procedural matter not covered by the charter or by a rule adopted by the council shall be resolved by a majority vote of council." The council voted on June 12th, 2024 by majority vote to delegate their quasi-judicial making authority to a hearings officer. The city also enjoys home rule authority under the city charter Sections 4 and 5. Additionally, Luba has previously found that a local government enjoys considerable discretion in selecting the procedures that will follow on remand, the Porin versus City of Bedford, 2007. And so also another issue raised in the second comment. Mr. Haugen submitted the 2023 Stormwater Master Plan and Figure 2-4 from that master plan to identify stormwater approval standards relevant to whether the Buxton Ranch development complies with the Comprehensive Plan and land use regulations. The second assignment of error requires the city to allow parties to respond to the evidence that was entered by the applicant when the record was reopened during the December 12th city council hearing in connection with the introduction of a condition of approval limiting the number of lots to 44 and increasing the minimum lot size to 4,000 square feet. This new evidence now being introduced by Mr. Haugen does not bear any relationship to that prior evidence as outside the scope of the second assignment of error. Mr. Haugen's broad characterization of the scope of remand and the second assignment of error would allow introduction of evidence to revisit every aspect of the application, which was clearly not Luba's intent on remand. In short, the evidence being presented is not relevant to the issues on remand. Should this evidence be allowed by the hearings officer, staff has the following comments on that. The evidence Mr. Haugen seeks to introduce does not constitute standards or criteria applicable to the application because it was adopted by the city after the land use application in this case was submitted. Stormwater master plan was adopted on May 15th, 2023 via ordinance 915. Buxton application was submitted on February 23rd, 2022. Therefore, the 2023 Stormwater Master Plan is not applicable to the Buxton Ranch application in any way per ORS 2271783, the goalpost rule, since it had not been adopted yet when the Buxton Ranch application was first submitted. Mr. Haugen misconstrues the purpose and effect of the stormwater master plan and the maps in question. He superimposed the project site onto Figure 2-4 incorrectly. The project site is actually located further to the west on-site than depicted in Mr. Haugen's exhibit and states that since it is located within the area identified as floodplain and wetlands, instead it is not within the hatched area labeled as developable. This means that the application is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and applicable land use regulations and should be denied. However, Stormwater Master Plan does not contain approval standards related to land use applications. The land use regulations and approval criteria related to storm drainage are contained in Scappus Development Code Section 17.154.100. Findings were included in the Planning Commission's staff report dated October 20th, 2022 related to that criteria, which is included as Exhibit 3 to the applicant's remand narrative. The findings were accepted by the city council in their original decision and are not subject to the current remand. Figure 2-4, a planning level map in the 2023 Stormwater Master Plan is not the governing floodplain or wetland map for the city in terms of regulating land uses, nor does the term "developable" on a planning level map relate to any criteria in the Development Code that would be recognized as enforceable to a specific land use application. The FIRM, which stands for Flood Insurance Rate Map, approved by FEMA, is the official map the city uses to regulate floodplain development as stated in Scappus Development Code Section 17.84.030B. The applicant completed wetland delineations approved by the Department of State Lands to determine the regulatory wetland boundaries on-site. Those studies were included as Exhibit 15 to the Planning Commission's staff report. The applicant completed a letter of map revision approved by FEMA to determine the current regulatory floodplain boundary, and that is included as Exhibit 8 to the Planning Commission's staff report. Staff's response to these submitted comments are entered into the record as additional findings and reduced to writing, which has been given to the hearings officer as well. Staff is also submitting another document tonight in writing to support what I'm about to enter in verbally. And this is regarding the fourth assignment of error. So I had previously made comments that are contained in the memo verbally during the December 5th, 2022 council hearing. This is included in the minutes for that meeting and is part of the record. However, the statement was not previously reduced to writing and included in the findings for approval. The statement is entered now into the record, written record as additional findings to demonstrate the stormwater ponds are permitted use within the floodplain. Copies of that statement are provided on the table at the back of the room. Based on the findings and conditions of approval as stated above, staff recommends approval of SB 1-22, ZC 1-22, DU 1-22, and SLDP 1-22, 2-22, 3-22, and 4-22. That concludes the summarization of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, the statement you talked about from December 5th, that's already in the record?
It's in the record.
On the audio recording?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll take the applicant's presentation at this time, please.
All right. Thank you and good evening, Mr. Kearns. My name is Garrett Stevenson, legal counsel for the applicant. Give me one moment here.
Sure.
I want to start by thanking staff for the staff report. I'm largely going to stand on my written materials that I submitted, I believe, in August.
August 8th.
August 8th, yep. And I assume you've read that, Mr. Kearns. But what I am going to do is just briefly touch on the issues here to prompt any questions that you may have for the applicant. And in furtherance of that, we've got quite a team here for you tonight. With me is Matt Sprague, who's the project planner. Brett Finch is the project engineer. He's on via Teams. And then we've got Dave Cady, Steve Poles, and Max Bondur from David Weekly Holmes, in case you have any questions of them. But as this is purely from our standpoint, a legal proceeding that does not require new evidence on our part, I'm guessing you may probably not. So there's four assignments of error that through Luba and the Court of Appeals trickled down to us that we're here to take care of tonight. The first one is, well, the first two, which are assignments of error 2 and 3, address the change that was made at the December 5 hearing to require the applicant to reduce the project scope from 48 lots down to 44. That was imposed as a condition of approval under ORS 197522 Subsection 3, which, as you know, gives the right to the applicant to recommend a condition of approval if it looks like approval will not be forthcoming. This was to address SMC 17.81.050 Subsection C 3, which is a mechanism in the city's code that allows you to obtain up to, I believe, 25% additional density if you're going through the planned development application process. In this instance, some 56% of the site In this instance, some 56% of the site is being reserved for open space. And we, in order to do that, we use the plan development process so that we could cluster the homes outside of the open space and as far away from the creek as possible. Originally, the application took advantage of that 25% allowance, although certainly not fully. The base zoning of the R1 zone, if you calculate it just based on the area of the property, allows a maximum density of 46 lots. We came in at a very, very small amount over that, which is allowable under the code at 48. However, the council expressed some concerns with that level of density, and we reduced it down to 44. And that is two lots less than the standard density allowed in the R1 zone. Luba originally denied the second assignment of error on the basis that our acceptance of that condition, in particular, my testimony that the applicant could make that pencil, they denied that assignment of error because it felt that those statements were not evidence pertaining to the criteria. The Court of Appeals disagreed, and in its assignment of error that was passed then down to us from Luba decided that we needed to reopen the record to allow testimony in response to the reduction in lots from 48 to 44. A related assignment of error is Assignment of Error 3, which we're also handling tonight, and that concerns findings regarding a 44-lot project as opposed to a 48-lot project. When we originally looked at this, we had reasonable assumptions, as did city staff, that from an impact standpoint, a 44-lot application or a project would be less impactful than a 48-lot one. And that concerns things like maximum amounts of impervious surface, the number of homes being built, the assumptions in the traffic study, and those sorts of items. We originally won the third assignment of error at Luba, but the Court of Appeals found, assigned that as error, basically taking the position that we needed to have some additional findings or some corrected findings and conditions of approval on the decision that explained how a 44-lot subdivision would still work. Luba originally said, because the petitioners in that case had not argued that we failed to meet any criteria with a 44-lot project, Luba, I think correctly, said, "Well, since you haven't argued that it fails to meet any criteria, there's really nothing more to say." But the Court of Appeals disagreed. So what you have in my August 8 written materials is a list of findings and conditions of approval that we believe needed to be updated based on a 44-lot project instead of a 48-lot project. So any questions so far, Mr. Kearns?
No. And so you've provided, well, there is, you've provided your proposed revisions to the original decision correspond with your arguments now on remand that respond to the remand order.
Correct, yeah. So what we did is, we put, we did the best we could to go through the findings that were in the staff report that was adopted as the city's findings, and make sure that those correlate to a 44-lot project to demonstrate that it can still meet the criteria.
Okay.
I mean, my position is, as you know, since this was adopted as a condition of approval, we need not completely change the project. We just need to be able to show that complying with that condition is reasonably feasible. And so the intent of our proposed findings is to demonstrate how a 44-lot subdivision can still meet the criteria as well as a 48-lot subdivision can. What that does, though, is it takes out of play SMC 17.81.050 Subsections, Subsection C, because we no longer need the density bonus.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to number four. How am I doing on, I'm doing okay on time. So Assignment of Error 4 concerns SMC 17.84.040 Subsection B, and this is not an Assignment of Error that's subject to new evidence, but when the application came in, one of the things it proposed was an extension of Eggleston Lane. It still proposes that. And in order to provide sufficient stormwater capacity for Eggleston Lane, we needed to provide adequate detention and treatment. And one of the ways that Weekly proposes to do that is to use a stormwater planter, as I'm sure you're familiar with, and staff supported that. However, one of that, I think, one and a portion of another of those stormwater planters is located in the existing 100-year special flood hazard area. It will not be, if the project is approved, it will not always be in that area because under our approved conditional letter of map revision from FEMA, once the grading is completed, those areas will be lifted out of the 100-year floodplain. However, staff determined that this was allowable under two theories, in addition to those articulated in the staff report. One of those is the allowance under 17.84.040 Subsection B, Subsection 3, that concerns the installation, reconstruction, or improvement of underground utilities or roadway improvements, including sidewalks, curbs, streetlights, and driveway aprons. They also explained that this is allowable under Subsection 8 of that section as a public works project. And the Planning Director's testimony that she quoted and inserted into her memo that she discussed earlier has a verbatim discussion of this, but in simple terms, in that area of SCAPU's, I understand it, there is no public, there is no publicly owned stormwater infrastructure. It is privately owned, subject to public easements, as this will be. And so the staff's proposed interpretation of this, which the council appeared to agree with, was that because these function in every way as a public facility treating stormwater from a public road, they could be considered public works projects and therefore allowable under 17.84.040 Subsection B. And our written materials explain this in more detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have on it.
You, where are you in the firm amendment?
With FEMA. Well, we have our, we have our conditional, conditional letter of map revision. That was actually approved before we submitted the application. And what that means is that, once we are allowed to start work out there, we would go in and do the grading, elevate the site that we're developing above the floodplain. And once that is concluded, the city will inspect that, and then we would apply for a letter of map revision from FEMA, which basically confirms that the work we've done matches the assumptions in their clomer.
Okay.
And that's a condition of approval. So we can't build Phase 2 until the lomer issues. Phase 1 is stuff that's already outside of the existing mapped special flood hazard area.
So is the conditional lomer in the record?
It is.
Okay.
The last assignment of error that we need to deal with is number 5, which is the block length standards. This one, to me, is the simplest to deal with. Under SMC 17.154 Subsection 40, Subsection C, the city can allow exemptions to block length standards for a number of reasons. But in this case, we can't meet the block length standard because Eggleston Lane directly abuts on wetland and riparian buffers, just to the, I believe it's to the south, Lori, but correct me if I'm wrong. And so in order to be able to cluster the way we need to, it's impossible to meet those block length standards there. We don't want to push that road into the wetland areas at this time. They're at the very edge of the property, and...
So preservation of this protected resource is kind of the compelling reason for this over-length request?
Yeah, and, and because it's, two reasons. Number one, it's the edge of the property, and, as you say, protecting those resources. The idea is, I think, at some point in the future, that if the property to the south develops, you may have somebody wanting to connect through to Eggleston Lane, but that, at this point, there is no connection on the other side of that wetland and riparian area for us to connect to. And so it didn't make sense, in this case, to push through. What we have at the end is a pretty standard hammerhead turnaround for fire apparatus. We do not propose a cul-de-sac, but the code, the section I quoted to you, Mr. Kearns, specifically gives discretion to the city planning director to determine whether or not that exemption should be allowed. The findings, in Luba's view, did not contain a positive enough statement that we had that exemption secured, and so in this instance, Lori's staff report explains why city staff believe that exemption is warranted here. And in our view, that ends the matter.
A question, so, once the firm, the firm maps are revised, will any portion of the development be within the floodplain?
No.
Okay. No lots?
No lots. There will be a public trail that the city's requested to, I believe, connect up to Veterans Park Trail that is going to be within the, the existing special flood hazard area, but I believe that's permitted outright in their code anyhow. So those will be the only improvements taking place in the special flood hazard area, and any other park-like things that ultimately the city wants to see there.
But no structures that would?
No structures. The idea is that we, by clustering this away from the creek, we're able to essentially do this through a cut. This is not a special flood hat, this is, well, excuse me, this is not a clomer F, which stands for fill. This is a standard clomer, which means we maintain a cut-fill balance within that mapped floodplain. And so when the project is concluded, a lot of that cut is going to be elevated up. That's where the road's going to be. That's where all the development is going to be. That's where all the homes are going to be. And so the way we phased it is that the portions of the site that are already outside of the existing floodplain are Phase 1. We can go through and develop those now without the clomer, the lomer. Portions of Phase 2 are those areas that we intend to raise out, essentially raise out of the floodplain and remap it. Those cannot be constructed, those homes cannot be constructed, until we have FEMA's final lomer in hand.
So the phasing lines that are in the proposal are still the phasing lines that you're proposing, based on where you've described what the phases are?
So we discussed this with staff, and what we would propose to do is include any additional lot because we're reducing, so if the, if the lots shift, like the lot numbers shift a bit, those lots are going to be included in Phase 2. So what it would mean is, is a net reduction of lots potentially in Phase 1. So we're being, we're trying to essentially safe harbor this, in a sense, by saying, if, for some reason, one of those lots, because we are going to shift the lines, if it drops into, drops, if a phase line essentially goes through that lot, we are going to take it on the safe side and put that phase line a little bit over, so that's in Phase 2.
Phase 2, okay.
And so no construction on that lot, regardless of whether it's fully or only partially out of the floodplain, no construction on that lot will occur until we obtain the lomer.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify in favor of the proposal? Anyone, anyone Zoom land there? Anyone online, as I go through the, who testifies next, raise your hand if you would like to testify. Anyone with neutral testimony or questions? Anyone opposed, beginning with Mr. Haugen? Okay, just a list of people who want to testify. Do several copies of it. September 2022. Okay, have you shown this to Mr. Stevenson, so he sees what you're circling? And I'll make note of that on my copy. This is the lot, 10 pages, okay. Right, well, as I was going to tell people, I'm not a really great note taker, so it's best if you've got your remarks in written form, give it to me, so that I'm not obligated to kind of sit here and listen while taking notes at the same time. It's, it's just really hard for me to do, so this is a huge help. Has Mr. Stevenson seen this Cascade Port? It's in here? Is this just your verbal testimony? Okay. Yeah, you can give this to him. I'll need a copy of that before you leave tonight, though, and he'll need a, he'll need to see a copy of that before he formulates his final rebuttal, you see what I mean?
Good evening, Mr. Kearns. Welcome to SCAPU's. My name is Joel Haugen. I am a citizen of the city of SCAPU's. I live at 52363 Southwest Jobin Lane, and I've lived in the city for 46 years. I've committed a lot of time to improving the city and served as the Chair of the Planning Commission, a volunteer city councillor for seven years between 2015 and 2022. I strongly object to this development and have been joined by many members in the community. Development is located in what has been clearly identified as a wetland and floodplain and is not suitable for development. If the project is constructed, it will have poor outcomes for the region's stormwater drainage, flooding into the city's stormwater systems. Project will cause poor outcomes to the surrounding neighbors whose drainage systems will be impacted. Project will cause poor outcomes to the people who eventually purchase the housing, as their properties will flood more often, be subject to poor drainage and higher maintenance insurance costs if they can obtain insurance at all. I, along with members of the community, have hired land use attorneys to help make the case that this development should not be allowed to proceed in the floodplain and wetland and should be denied. It has been expensive, but our community and our region are worth it. We have been successful to date as the courts have found error after error over the city's review and approval of this ill-conceived development. Here we are today. They will present additional information demonstrating why this application should be denied. Lack of proper authorization for the hearing officers is number one. With no disrespect, Mr. Kearns, while you are a reputable and experienced municipal law attorney, you are not authorized approval authority under SCAPU's City Code. City Code specifies that only the planner, Planning Commission, or city councillor are approved authorities for quasi-judicial land use hearings, making your role unauthorized and making this hearing invalid. Thus, I request the hearings officer denied this application based on procedural error or remanded for reconsideration by a valid approval authority. Second and third assignment of error. I am addressing my comments to the second assignment of error. As background, the Court of Appeals and Luba remanded review of this application required the city to allow parties to provide evidence related to the developer's statement and also the city's condition of approval related to that statement. At the city council's public hearing for this matter, the Court of Appeals opined that the city council indicated that they did not believe the development complied with the comprehensive plan and applicable land use regulation. As a result, they have asked the developer to consider ways in which it could reduce the number of lots and increase the lot sizes to see if that caused the development to so comply. The developer responded by saying 44 was the number of lots the applicant could make pencil while protecting the creek and providing a lot size of 4,000 square feet. The city issued a condition of approval based on that statement and never explained how the condition of approval to reduce the number of lots to 44 and increase lot sizes to 4,000 square feet complied with the comprehensive plan and land use regulations. Court of Appeals remanded the approval to Luba, and the city required, requiring closer consideration of this process. As identified in the third assignment of error, there was never evidence presented into the record as to why 48 lots does not meet the applicable regulation, 44 lots does. Simply reducing the number of lots to 44 is not sufficient to meet the city's development standards, particularly concerning land use impacts, environmental preservation, neighborhood principles. The reason there is no evidence in the record is because 44 lots at 4,000 square feet does not make the application comply with the comprehensive plan and applicable regulations. I will present some of the reasons for this lack of compliance. If I had more resources, I would present more. Stormwater Master Plan and Stormwater Drainage Plan. As shown in the Stormwater Master Plan, Figure 2.4, the subject development is cited in the floodplain and the wetlands and not on developable land, despite the attention from the city. The city indicated that the underlying development did not adequately protect the natural resources and sought ways to condition development to make it comply with underlying land use regulations. The adjustment from 48 lots to 44 lots and increased lot size to 4,000 square feet does not mitigate the environmental or infrastructural impacts adequately. This is what is required by ORS 197.522-3 to approve non-conforming development. Siting a project in wetland and floodplain and not on developable lands does not comply with applicable regulations. This application should be denied. Hydrology and outdated data. To the extent the city is going to use the applicant's hydraulic calculations to justify that the development complies with the comprehensive plan and applicable regulations, those calculations are based on outdated FEMA flood insurance data from 1987 and rainfall data from 1973, failing to account for modern climate conditions and flood risks. Therefore, it must base its hydraulic calculations on current FEMA calculations and maps. Additionally, FEMA's current suspension, suspension of the new clomer F and lomer F applications raises further concerns about the flood safety and accuracy of the development's hydrology assessments. Evidence being used to support the application is outdated and stale. The city cannot reasonably base an approval on outdated information, information three to five decades old. The city must delay or deny approval until such time that a third-party commission, commissions a hydrology study on updated information or require the development to provide an updated hydrology study, and delay any review until information is present. Today, I received a letter from an expert, national expert hydrologist by the name of Roger...
Sutherland.
Yeah, do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Roger Sutherland. Yeah, I'm going to skip over some of that for brevity. I'm going to focus my remarks on the foolishness of allowing, this is Roger speaking, on the foolishness of allowing massive filling in the floodplain adjacent to a flood-prone waterway based on peak flows and water surface that don't even reflect the significant increases due to the development that has been allowed and will continue to be allowed in the future. The SCAPU Stormwater Master Plan, SSMP, published in May 2023 and developed by Brown and Caldwell, didn't even develop a model of the entire SCAPU's watershed, so the SSMP has no idea of the current and future flood risks associated with continued development in that watershed. The most significant flood risk to SCAPU's, including the downtown area, is this waterway and how it will respond to the increased impervious surfaces associated with urbanization and the potential impacts of climate change, which suggests Oregon rainfall intensities and depths will increase. A comprehensive model is needed before a decision should be reached on this proposal for development that could potentially do so much reversible harm. The proposed development would not be allowed anywhere in the Portland area since they have regulations in place since 1990 that any fill allowed within the designated... within the designated hundred year floodplain must be offset by the same amount of floodplain storage lost to the allowed fill. One can't simply dig a hole since the floodplain storage needs to be connected to the waterway and it needs to be hydrocally effective across the flood range of flood elevations, which is usually associated with the two-year and hundred-year floods. We now know that fillings in floodplains immediately adjacent to waterways is not a good idea since it leads to increased flooding when the peak flows of the waterway increase due to urbanization. Flood insurance rate maps firms are based on the levels of urbanization that existed when the flood insurance study was developed, which in many cases, like the city of Scappus, the FIS is decades old. The fact is that FEMA spends very little money on developing peak flows used in the study. If they exist from some previous credible modeling efforts, they will be used. But generally, the peak flows are based on a gauge data analysis. When a gauge does not exist, the waterway of interest, a peak flow transfer equation is used based on some other watershed in the drainage area comparison between the two. This technique has exhibited considerable error when checked with detailed modeling, especially for urbanized watersheds. This is the case for Scappus Creek. So no hydrologic model of the entire watershed has been developed. But we don't know how accurate the peak flows used for the FIS for Scappus Creek are in established and based flood elevations or the hundred-year return interval flood elevations. Another issue that should be addressed is that FEMA recently suspended reviewing and processing any conditional letter of map provisions, applications. A Clomar F developed for Buxton Branch led to the issuance of a Clomar letter of, Clomar letter of map provision for this development. The reason for this suspension is that FEMA has been sued over the concept of Clomar Fs that allow massive filling in the floodplain without considering the potential impacts on endangered species like salmon in the waterway. FEMA was sued decades ago for the regular, for the concept of a regular Clomar without these issues being addressed, and it has been standard practice for well over a decade to essentially obtain a biological opinion as part of the Clomar submittal that certifies it will be no taking of salmon before the Clomar can ever be processed. Somehow, plaintiffs thought the Clomar issue was resolved with the previous lawsuit, not realizing that Clomar Fs are separate from Clomar, from Clomars in FEMA's world. There must be liquid litigated separately. So it's almost sure that any Clomar F in the region moving forward will have the same biological opinion required for Clomars as been in place for a decade, decade. Technically, the Clomar for this development was issued before the lawsuit was litigated and does not apply. Though it will likely be one of the region's last Clomar F and Clomar ever issued. Is that what you are planning on telling the residents of Scappus who are flooded out in the future by Scappus Creek that you approved this bad idea developed on a technicality? Don't be complacent in believing that extreme flooding in the southeast won't ever happen here. Incredible studies show that to be different. So for all the reasons I have listed in this pro bono letter, it would not be in the best interest of the residents of Scappus to approve this development at this time. Let us not make the same old mistakes by those in the past who came before us. We now know the right thing to do is to develop a comprehensive hydrologic model of the entire Scappus Creek watershed and address these worrisome issues. I have raised, that I've raised. Establish future flood return elevations based on these models. Then, with the results in hand, decide whether to allow development to move forward. And if it does, how many lots it should be limited to. I understand that a proposal to do exactly that has been recently developed and submitted but to arguably, by arguably the state's best full-time water resource engineering consulting firm. That granting organization is the Columbia River Restoration Fund, and a decision on a potential grant award is expected in the next few months. Finally, for the record, Buxton Ranch properties hosted for this development are listed on the SSSP and the floodplains as wetlands, not developable lands. And thank you, that's Roger Sutherland. I'd also like to raise a, some additional concerns, and that's biased in the decision-making process. The city report appears biased in favor of the developer as it concurs with all applicants.
But what report are you referring to?
The staff report.
Okay.
Appears biased in the favor of developer as it concurs with all applicant assertions without adequately concerning, considering opposing views or alternative design solutions. The staff's waiver of block length and connectivity standards for the developer further reinforces this bias. I would like to request that the city hire an independent land expert, such as someone with the credentials of you, Mr. Kearns, to provide the city with an independent evaluation of whether the application complies with the comprehensive plan and the applicable regulations, including all relevant floodplain assessments. That independent evaluation could then be subject to a remand hearing using approval authority authorized by the city code. Environmental and public safety concerns. The dense floodplain development poses significant environmental risks, particularly flood safety and local ecosystem. A comprehensive independent study of the Scappus watershed is necessary to assess the full impact of the project, including its potential effects on local habitats, flood risks, and public safety. Application should be delayed, delayed or denied until an independent study is resolved, completed, and resolved for review. And I am requesting the record remain open for an additional seven days to allow further evidence and written testimony to be submitted. Please keep this record open. Conclusion. The second assignment of error invites parties to rebut the developer's statement that forty-four lots at four thousand square feet is what is financially feasible. The third assignment of error requires the city demonstrate how the forty-four lot modification to the development makes the development comply with the comprehensive plan and land use regulations. A development by the forty-eight lots does not. The city cannot do that because neither a forty-eight lot nor a forty-four lot development may be built in a floodplain and wetland on land designated as not developable. Reducing the number of lots and increasing the lot size does not satisfy the required comprehensive plan requirement and applicable regulations. I request that the application be denied for the following reasons. One, the hearings offered, there is not authorized to preside over the hearing. Only city council is so authorized. The development is cited in floodplain and wetlands does not comply with a comprehensive plan and applicable regulations, and the conditions of approval do not cause the development to come into compliance as required to ORS one nine seven point five two two of section three. If hydrology data is being used to present, provide evidence about the development's compliance with the comprehensive plan and applicable regulation, that evidence is outdated by thirty to fifty years and cannot be relied on. There are other stormwater management issues, and the staff's staff reports are biased and should be reconsidered with an independent reviewer. Of my final remark, and I've got a few seconds left, is thank you for your time and I appreciate your attention to the detail. And again, I'd like to have the record remain open for seven days, please.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, you don't have an extra copy of this, Mr. Sutherland report?
I have a copy here in the, my copy here. I can share that.
Because Mr. Stevenson needs to see it.
Oh, I'll give that to him.
Okay. Okay, and you, you heard staff's response to your comments that you submitted coming into today?
I did.
Okay. Okay, I don't think I have any other questions. I think I understand your position on all the points you've raised. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify in opposition? I have a list of names. Judy Haugen. You're not going to testify? Okay. Shannon Hubler. Come on down. Hi. Okay, good. Slides. Okay, and you have a copy from Mr. Stevenson? Perfect. Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Kearns, any chance I could get five minutes here?
I'll give you five.
Thank you, sir. All right. My name is Shannon Hubler. I live on Felicia Way here in Scappus, and I'm a stream ecologist by profession for about twenty-seven years. I've been recognized as an expert in stream ecology and the assessment of biological condition in streams and rivers. I would like to start by just showing that I've made multiple maps here. I've overlaid the FEMA maps within Google Earth, and they show very crude estimates. I don't have access to GIS nor do I have the plans in GIS. Very crude estimates of the Buxton retaining wall, which I'm calling by definition further in the paper, a levee. It will act as a levee to deflect floodwaters. That's on page three of the slides. And by my estimate, that's about one hundred and twenty-nine thousand cubic feet of floodwaters that are cut off from FEMA-recognized floodplains.
How much was that again?
One hundred and twenty-nine thousand cubic feet in, in the five hundred year floodplain, so beyond the one hundred year floodplain, right where the retaining wall levee is being built. So moving on to the next slide, number four and number five. Where do those floodwaters go when you get more than a one hundred year flood, which, as we know, is currently underestimated? They get pushed into the creek. Those increased flows get deflected from that retaining wall slash levee, one-sided levee. So the other parts of the city and the streams are not protected. Will result in increased erosion, increased bank failures, and increased sedimentation. This will result as threat, impacts to threatened endangered salmonids in the creek. Repairing restoration projects by the Scappus Bay Watership Council are already in effect. Those will be put at risk by increased erosion, bank failures, and sedimentation. So in essence, as outlined in number two, assignment of error number two, the retaining wall and the application will not protect the creek. It doesn't matter how many homes you put there. You could put one home on that lot, build that floodwall levee. It won't protect the creek. So now we can move on to the errors made by the city. There's a series of the rest of the slides there. Talk about specific city municipal codes, sensitive lands, fish and riparian corridor. Look at the purpose. It says the purpose is to protect and restore water bodies. Protect and restore the hydrologic ecological functions. Protect habitat for fish and other aquatic life.
Like, direct me where you're reading from.
I'm sorry, this is slide number six, sensitive land seventeen point eight nine.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah. I've highlighted, those are my highlights, not the, not the code. Conditional use seventeen one three oh oh five C requires the protection and preservation of watercourses, say the local stream reach, habitat areas, the riparian and in-stream and drainage areas, the downstream reaches in Scappus Bay. Seventeen point eight four two two oh. Now we're getting into some real good stuff here. Variances to flood damage prevention. When dealing with a flood hazard, there is very little margin for error. That's true. All flood hazard variances are deemed to be major, as defined in seventeen point one three four. That's the next slide. We'll get to that one. That one's very critical. Variances shall only be issued upon, number two, a determination that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship to the applicant and outweighs the risk associated with the variance. I don't see a hardship explained in the application. They could put twenty houses outside of the floodplain and make millions of dollars. I'm not sure where the hardship comes in. So I'm running out of time. Let's just go to one, three, seventeen, one three four, oh three oh. Criteria for granting a variance. Again, major variances shall satisfy all criteria A through E. A, the proposed variance will not be materially detrimental to, skip ahead, other properties in the vicinity. These floodwaters above the one hundred year floodplain will be pushed to the east and downstream. They will increase flooding into existing properties in the vicinity of this project. C, existing physical and natural systems such as, but not limited to, drainage. We've already gone over that. That's the downstream area where this will contribute to, or parks. There are two parks immediately downstream in this project that will be flooded at higher levels due to this project, this one-sided levee. Thank you.
Okay. Here is a lot to go through in this, so I'll need to digest that. And Mr. Stevenson has the right to rebut this as well. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to testify in opposition? I don't have anyone else signed up for this. Anyone in Zoom land? Anyone else in the audience want to testify in opposition? Okay. Mr. Stevenson, you've got a copy of Mr. Hubler's handout as well as the Cascade Water Resources memo from Mr. Haugen. So you can have, you want, you have the right to submit a written final rebuttal as well after tonight's hearing. But I would say go ahead and, and make some verbal rebuttal.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Kearns. I don't think I'm going to take ten minutes here. I want to start with the request to leave the written record open for new evidence. I don't see that granting that request is warranted in this case. Most of the discussion I've heard tonight was a repeat of discussions that were held in front of the city council and the planning commission in twenty twenty-two. And as this is going to relate to my main point on what we heard, I don't believe any of it is terribly responsible to the question in assignment of error two and three, which concerns the difference between a forty-eight lot project and a forty-four lot project. So at this point, Mr. Haugen and the public have had more, in my, in my opinion, more than adequate time to make their case on these issues. The city council considered all of the floodplain impacts here and found that the project still warranted approval under the, under the city's special flood hazard ordinance. And that approval is not on remand from Luba or the Court of Appeals. So I, I would request that you deny the request for an additional seven days of open record. As far as Mr. Haugen's testimony is concerned, he's raised issues about a plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-three and apparently prepared on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. However, our application was submitted long before that. It became, I believe, complete right around that time. But it was submitted, I believe, in March of twenty twenty-two. So it's simply not applicable land use criteria, even assuming that the Stormwater Design Manual supplies any land use regulations. I have no comment on the objection to your ability to decide the, decide the case tonight except to refer back to what staff has said about the city council's authority under its home rule and charter. See here. There's a lot of testimony about why the project somehow is not consistent with a FEMA process. And there was a mention in there about FEMA not processing Clomar Fs.
I think you're reading from Mr. Sutherland's memo.
I'm reading from my notes on Mr. Haugen's testimony.
Yeah, and he was, at that point, he was reading, as I was tracking, he was reading from Mr. Sutherland's memo where he talks about the, the.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't.
And the final LOMAR and the litigation.
Yeah, honestly, Mr. Kearns, I couldn't tell the difference between what Mr. Haugen was saying himself and what he was reading from the memo. But I did hear something about the fact that FEMA, in his view, is not processing Clomar Fs, but we don't have a Clomar F here. We have a standard Clomar. Clomar Fs go on a different track. As far as the evidence that Mr. Haugen has submitted, I don't believe any of it is responsive to the narrow question on remand, which is the difference in the impact on the criteria between a forty-eight lot subdivision and a forty-four lot subdivision in the same area. So I'm going to object to inclusion of any of it in the record. I don't believe it's responsive. And again, the question of whether or not the project meets the city's flood hazard standards has been asked and answered. It's not on remand in this case. As for Mr. Hubler's testimony, I have the same objection. I don't believe that we are empowered to rehash flood issues that were decided and not remanded. And then there was a lot of testimony, I believe, about a variance and how we don't meet a variance standard under the.
Mr. Hubler's.
Yeah, so I just want to make it clear from the record that we're not requesting a variance to the special flood hazard area regulations. And so I don't believe that any of that testimony is relevant, nor do I believe that any of the testimony on the conditional use permit is relevant because the conditional use standards were not a component of the remand from Luba. So that includes my oral presentation and oral rebuttal. So that concludes my oral presentation and oral rebuttal. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. We would, again, ask that you deny the request for an additional seven days of open record period and allow us seven days for final written argument so I can go through the materials that was given tonight.
Okay, and I think you haven't really, you haven't submitted any new evidence anyway.
I have not.
Going into this, you submitted argument. And the first new evidence that I've seen in all of this came in tonight.
Right.
Okay. Okay, and as I understand Mr. Haugen's argument, it's, he disputes that the 48 lots met the approval criteria, and he also asserts that 44 similarly doesn't meet the approval criteria.
Yeah, I think that's right. But the way I conceive, rightly or wrongly, Mr. Kearns, the way I conceived of Luba's remand is what they're looking for since, what they're looking for is whether the condition of approval allowing, requiring a reduction in density from 48 to 44 lots, whether that narrow question would violate any of the approval criteria. And in my view, that doesn't turn on the accuracy of the flood modeling. It doesn't turn on the correctness of the city's special flood hazard area code or any of those other things.
So you dispute his assertion that that calculus reopens the whole smorgasbord of approval criteria?
Correct.
Okay.
And as we noted both before the city council and as I explained earlier, the scope, the city council did not find that the area of disturbance violated any of the approval criteria. And that includes the grading plan, that includes the public works plans, that includes the floodplain modification plans. They believed all of those plans met the approval criteria. The one thing they didn't like was the density. And they didn't like that we were asking for a density increase through the plan development process. Exactly. And so I think our purpose tonight here is to examine whether or not, I think it would be a little easier to conceive of, frankly, Mr. Kearns, if we were going from a 44-lot subdivision to a 48-lot subdivision. Because intuitively, if you're increasing the number of lots, that's going to have more impacts than you need to evaluate. This has been a little bit, frankly, difficult for me to wrap my brain around because we're reducing the number of lots. And so in my view, the simplest way to think about it is that the city council ultimately denied, or wished to deny, our density increase request, and we accepted a condition that had that effect. But what it didn't do is, I don't think that either the city council, Luba, or the Court of Appeals threw open this as a door to allow a complete litigation of all of the information that we went through back in 2022, a complete, a complete new discussion about floodplain regulations, all of which the city council decided that we met and were not issues on appeal at Luba.
Even if it does, even if one could construe it that way, you're, I'm just maybe putting words in your mouth, but your argument is that the findings that the city council adopted demonstrate that those criteria were met?
Yeah, so in the case of the special flood hazard area criteria, the only issue there that's on appeal is the interpretation of what the allowable uses are in the special flood hazard area, which is assignment of error number four. That is something that is not open to reconsideration on an evidentiary basis. That was the only--
Stormwater.
Exactly, yeah. That was the only issue concerning flood and flood hazards that made its way to Luba. And of course, we were remanded on that in the initial Luba decision. What Luba said is not that we need to reopen the record on that issue or any other issue related to flood hazards, but that we needed to adopt findings explaining what staff explained to the city council on December 5 of '22. Okay. And intuitively, what I expected to hear tonight as it regards new evidence concerning the difference between a 44-lot subdivision and a 48-lot subdivision, understanding that disturbance area, I mean, and when I say literally, it doesn't change, it doesn't change at all. The retaining walls are in the same place on both sides. The road's in the same place. What I expected to hear is perhaps an attempt to talk about why some of the, some of the land division standards or zoning standards were not met, but I didn't hear any of that. And that, to me, is the most applicable in terms of issues in that zone of interest.
So nothing has changed is true. That nothing has changed between then and now in terms of impacts to flood plains, flood issues, wetlands. The, even though the lots have been reduced, the size of the lots soak up the excess space so that the lines delimiting the development are the same.
Correct. I mean, arguably, a reduction in lots reduces the amount of impervious surface, and it reduces the load on the stormwater infrastructure. But, and it reduces the number of trips generated out of the project. But in all other respects, the project's identical to the one that the city council approved. And to editorialize a little bit, that's why we believed a condition reducing the number of lots was appropriate. City council did not like the density. And the easiest way to deal with that problem was to reduce the number of lots and not reopen design to every other issue. And the city council obviously was comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay. I understand, I think I understand your position. And Mr. Haugen's testimony was very illuminating to me tonight because it really does kind of, I think that's his theory in this, is that it, the remand order with the evaluation of 44 lots reopens all the approval criteria.
Yeah, and obviously I disagree, but I appreciate your questions. And I have nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you. Turn it back over to staff. You've heard it all tonight. Any parting advice based on the testimony you heard come in?
I do want to confirm that there was no floodplain variance requested by this application. So criteria related to that do not apply here. Aside from that, we will rest with the findings and conditions of approval as presented in the remand staff report tonight.
Okay. Okay. Okay, with that, that concludes tonight's public testimony portion. I have before me Mr. Haugen's request that the record be kept open for the submission of additional evidence and argument. I'm going to deny that because under state law, you would have a right if new evidence came in. But the applicant hasn't even submitted new evidence in this remand proceeding. And so what you've submitted is pretty substantive. And I think that everyone has had a fair and full opportunity to submit new evidence in response to the remand order. And you've done that and argument with regard to the issues, the legal issues that were part of the remand order. And you've, again, done, and I don't think, Mr. Stevenson, you have a copy of transcript of Mr. Haugen's testimony? It looks like 10 pages in length. Okay, I can do that, yeah. So I'm going to deny the request that the record be kept open. I'm going to close the record tonight. And the weird thing under state law is it assumes that the applicant's final rebuttal is something that comes in after the record closes. So the applicant has seven days from tonight to submit a final written argument, argument only, no new evidence. Here it is at the end of the day on September 30, Monday. So I would give seven full days that would give the applicant until the, until the 8th of October. I'm calculating this right. That would be like Tuesday morning, Tuesday. So they, so we had Tuesday at the close of business. When do you, what is the close of business for the planning department, by the way?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. Email that to the planning director. Make sure it's in their hands. So this is, I was trying to talk to someone today, and there was like massive failure of the internet and the phone system. So, you know. Tuesday, the 8th, by 5:00 PM. Assume that Russian hackers will kill the internet between now and then. So just be warned. Right. And so at that point, I will take everything. I'll be digesting between now and then. And at that point, it's super helpful, the written materials, Mr. Haugen. As I mentioned, over the years, I have not become a better note taker, only worse. And so I appreciate your submissions. So with that, that concludes tonight's hearing. And we'll expect final written rebuttal from the applicant by the close of business on Tuesday, October 8. And approximately two weeks after that, my decision will come out, which will then be forwarded to the city council for its consideration. And as I mentioned, it has options to accept, reject, or modify what I submit. But there won't be a public hearing on this before the city council. Anyone who wants a copy of my decision or anyone else's, make sure you get your information to planning director. I see a hand raised. Is that a question? Do that, connect information here. You don't need to disclose it on the internet. But that's what you need to do to get a copy of my decision and then the city council's final decision, which will include an ordinance because there's a, there's a zone change in this mix as well. Email works. Email works.
Email is different than it was two years ago. So make sure you, it's been updated. Just make sure.
Even I noticed that.
It's online, but also it was in the public notice if you received a notice. Yeah.
Okay, that's a good way to communicate. Okay, with that, that's the end of tonight's hearing. Thanks to all of you for participating and keeping us on track here. And we will push through this and reach a conclusion. Thank you.